Welcome to the July 16th meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. For the clerk, please call the rolls.
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Panaleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Palmer, absent. Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bertie. You please join me in a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand here in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by mayor. I do have a resolution of appreciation this evening that I'd like to read. This is for the Lake Forest Day Foundation. It's a fifth anniversary. I know we have our two former mayors here that worked very hard on this, former mayor Jack Kuszlak and former mayor Mike Rumel. I'd like to read this resolution into the record and then present this to both of you as well. Resolution, whereas this July marks the fifth anniversary of the founding of the Lake Forest Day Foundation, whereas the Lake Forest Day Foundation was created in 2008 to recognize and support the 100th anniversary of the American Legion's Lake Forest Day annual celebration, whereas due to the foresight of former mayors Jack Kuszlak and Mike Rumel, along with many other civic-minded community members and generous donors, the foundation raised over $1 million in private donations to generate enough income to ensure future Lake Forest Days in perpetuity. And whereas the city of Lake Forest and its residents sincerely appreciate the efforts of the foundation and the many residents who have contributed to it, now therefore be it resolved by the city council that on behalf of the administration and the residents of the community, the council hereby expresses appreciation and gratitude to the Lake Forest Day Foundation for a public-private service established and carried out in the true Lake Forest spirit of thoughtful planning and volunteerism. Be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor the 16th day of July 2012. And Jack and Mike, if you want to come on up.
And I'd like to move for approval of the resolution.
Please.
Before they come up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. All in the house. No stammering speech, then we adjourn. Right, yeah. Thank you, Bud. Bud, did you want to say anything? You got an opportunity to plug in to the campaign. Oh, okay. We already covered that. Okay. Jackson, you don't want to pass up this opportunity? You're right. We don't.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. I think it's very timely that the council saw fit to pass this resolution because we have Lake Forest Day coming up, and it gives us an opportunity to report on the foundation and where it stands and what it's done. Now, as I think you all recall, it was, the foundation was created before the centennial, and Michael and I had the honor of being co-chair of the centennial celebration, which raised money to support the festivities, most notably the beach party that we had in August of '08, but it also contributed to the Legion Post Foundation and to the, indirectly to the formation of the Lake Forest Day Foundation. Now, the Lake Forest Day Foundation was created in July of '07, and hence we're celebrating its fifth anniversary. It was funded by about 80 or 90 residents and institutions from the city of Lake Forest, so it's purely a private foundation. We raised our goal, which was $1 million, and that endowment was put in place to perpetuate Lake Forest Day. Whenever the Legion, and I hope it never happens, is not able to put it on as they have for the past 90-plus years, the Lake Forest Day Foundation would pick up the necessary expenses. While, when that is not the case, we'd be using the endowment income to support local veterans' causes in keeping with our mission statement. Now, in a letter that the foundation just sent out, and I should recognize Bud Turner, who's here, who represents the Legion on the foundation's board, Art Wood is the president of the foundation; he was unable to be here today, and then Willard Bun of Baytree Bank is the treasurer. So, we have a board of six local residents, and I'd like to comment on that in a few minutes. But, in the letter that we sent out to the major donors, we said that the foundation is well and healthy. Our first objective was to preserve the endowment in a pretty rocky time of financial gyrations, and we did that, but as a result, our interest income is fairly low. We've invested mostly in treasuries and insured CDs, but we've used that income, $10,000 of which went to the Lake Forest Day in the form of additional bands, picking up some of the costs that the Legion had here, had heretofore picked up, and about $8,000 has been given to local veterans' causes. We're currently in the, mostly in Great Lakes. We also had a bit to do with the flagpole restoration in Market Square, and of course we recognized our major donors in the form of a plaque that is on the west side of the downtown railroad station. So, I think the most notable accomplishment has been that we've collected virtually 100% of all the outstanding pledges, and that says a lot about the residents of Lake Forest and the contributing institutions. In fact, when we sent this letter out just a week or two ago, it wasn't to solicit more funds, it was to report on the foundation and what we've been doing. We've also received a few checks from people who obviously still support our cause. So, I think, I've said all I want to say, and I'd invite Bud and Michael to join me, but I should have pointed out as well that the Legion continues to do a fantastic job in connection with Lake Forest Day, but it's getting more and more difficult for them, given the aging membership and the dwindling numbers. And so I'd like to put in a plug for the local Legion Post here today, to all those who may be watching, to say that they need volunteers. The flags don't go up by themselves, they require a lot of volunteers, and there are only about 20 active Legion, Legionnaires to do that. So, they formed a squadron for the sons of Legionnaires to volunteer, and they've also formed an auxiliary for the female members of the Legionnaires' family to volunteer. And the best way to contact them would be through their commander, Tom Marks, who's a resident here in Lake Forest, and Tom has said, feel free to call him at home. So, with that, I'd like to just again thank you for the recognition. I think it's a tremendous sign of what makes this community special. I mean, this, this has been a fantastic run, and I thank again all the members of the community that have contributed, as well as city staff that supported it so well. So, thank you very much.
Bud, do you want to say something?
I'm going to give it a quick plug. Remember, August 1st, first Wednesday of every August, is Lake Forest Day with the parade, and then we will also have the carnival, the food, and beer garden open the night before. And this year, we're honoring Vietnam vets, so if there are any Vietnam vets listening, you're invited to march in the parade with us, and if you're not a member, please join. You can go to post264.org, and there's a membership form you can print out and fill out. Would love to have you out there. Thank you.
Michael, you're not going to say anything? I can't believe that.
This is a community's opportunity to get to see this council lead off the parade. I hope you all come out.
Again, I'd like to thank again both former mayors, Michael Rumel and Jack Kuszlak, Bud, and the whole Post for all your, your hard work and effort. I know everyone in the community looks forward to August 1st and Lake Forest Day, so we're looking for a great turnout, and hopefully we don't have 100-degree weather, but we have a nice, a nice sunny day for everyone to enjoy. So, again, thank you for all your hard work, and I know that with all the work you've done, you've ensured that we will have this great event in our community for many, many years to come. So, thanks again from all the residents of their community. Next item on the agenda this evening is the city manager contract approval. Members here of the council, you've had an opportunity to look at that. If you have any questions or comments, we'd entertain them now. If not, we'll look for a recommendation for approval. And move to approve agreement if there's no questions.
Is this a regular voice vote? I don't have a...
This would be a roll call.
Roll call. Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panaleon.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy a's, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. That concludes my comments this evening. The next item is comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Members of the council, first let me say thank you, and I know I extend my whites' thank yous too, to know that I'll be here for another year. If, with the council's indulgence, I would like to advance the item under new business, review of preliminary design drawings of the Telegraph Road pedestrian underpass in the Amtrak Hiawatha station stop. We have a representative here this evening of Metra, and he's assured me if he doesn't get home early, the trains won't run on time tomorrow. So, no, I'm only kidding. For all of you who are at home worried about Kent, your, your train will be on time tomorrow, no problem. But we wanted to advance this also because it's such an important community issue, and we want to make sure it does get full exposure at the council meeting. As the council knows, this is a subject that we've been working on for a number of years now. We, a few years ago, were very successful in getting the Sunrise Express implemented with the assistance of Metra and its state representative, Susan Garrett. That's been a huge success, I think, for both Metra and the city of Lake Forest, as well as all of Lake County. We've also been working on this issue of getting an Amtrak stop in West Lake Forest, and an ancillary and probably even more important component of that, though, is pedestrian underpass that we've been working on even before we had some of the fatalities that we had over on the, on the West Telegraph Road station. I'm happy to report that as of this moment, we have seven out of eight of the agencies are on board and in agreement. In a recent meeting that was held at the request of State Senator Susan Garrett, there was a feeling that IDOT would approach Canadian Pacific, who is the final player in all of this, with where we are all at and where the agreements are at and on the, on the other understandings. One of the things that came up in that meeting, however, was a resolution that really set forth the city's support for the stop, the Amtrak stop, and also formalized the study that Quandell Consultants have done on behalf of the city of Lake Forest to show that 13 out of 14 of those Hiawatha Amtrak stops could stop here with minimal to no impact on the other traffic, be it Metra or Canadian Pacific traffic on the, on the rail line. This evening, we're also looking for some feedback from the city council, and that's what we'll do first, on the conceptual designs with respect to the pedestrian underpass there. This was presented to the public at, last week in a public meeting. The turnout was a little light, but we want to make sure that the community is fully aware of the different concepts that we're looking at, and that you have some opportunity to give direction to our consulting engineers on likes, dislikes, so that they can then begin moving the process forward. Our goal here is to try and get this approved on board moving forward so that it's a final piece of the puzzle, if you will, with getting Amtrak to agree to that stop, because we knew from the start that a condition of getting Amtrak to stop here was the implementation of the underpass. So, with that, I'm going to ask Ramesh Canaparetti, our city engineer, to come forward with, I think, our consulting engineers, and they'll take us through the design drawings, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have with the resolution that is also included in your packet this evening.
Mayor, members of the council. As Bob has given a good introduction of where we are with this Telegraph Road station underpass, I'd just like to take a few minutes to just go over in terms, usually what happens on a construction project on the process, and how this underpass project is a little different than the typical project whenever we get any grants. On a typical project, we do the conceptual plans before, and then we engage a phase-one engineering where we go to different agencies saying that, are we on the right track? And once they say, okay, then we go to our phase-two final design engineering, and that's when typically we try to get the grants. In this case, we got the grants up front, and then we are doing basically everything backwards, and we're trying to get the conceptual plans done right now so that we can move on to the phase-one and phase-two. Again, pedestrian under, underpass, the three reasons, Bob has alluded ones with the possibility of Amtrak stop, safety, obviously mayor and council has chaired the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee where that was the major essence, and number three, we're trying to make that west side a transit-oriented hub, and this underpass gives you, gives us that opportunity to make the west side a, a kind of a hub so that pedestrians and, you know, even the bikers or the Amtrak stop, local commuters can enjoy that facility, but also will be able to safely access east and west side of the project. Just to brief update on the open house, as Bob said, we had a light turnover, but for the, most of them who did show up at the open house, they were all in favor for the conceptual plans we showed, and also the preferred alternative, which is we call the west bowl, the 2B. There were, there were questions and comments in terms of, can we provide some kind of a closed-circuit TV? We said we'll look into that as, as part of our planning process. There were concerns regarding, can we extend the sidewalk on the west side, on the east side, basically of the tracks, all the way to Conway Road? We said, yeah, those are some of the items we have to consider as we move along with the final design. With that, I'll introduce you to Barry Kravitz. He is the senior structural engineer for SDR, and he's also the project manager for this project, who will go over some of the conceptual plans which we have envisioned, and then, and then move forward with that. And then we'll, please stop at any time if you have any questions, or we can answer questions at the end.
Thank you, Ramesh. Thank you, Bob, for moving this up. My wife will appreciate that. Counsel, mayor, thank you for your time. As Ramesh alluded to, we've been working for several months now on some concept designs, and I want to let you see that what we've got on the screen are just concepts. Nothing's been enhanced at this point, but to give you a quick briefing before we roll through the slides, we looked at several other alternative concepts for narrowing down to the three that you'll see this evening, and then going through a process, we narrowed it down to the most effective and most widespread and acceptable alternatives at this particular point in time. So, our opening slide here just has a couple of obvious views of existing conditions on the site. Little hard to see, but basically an aerial photo, north being upward, and you can see on the left side of the tracks the existing station. And we'll refer to three alternatives today, one of which is north of the station, the other two will be south of the station building. So, first brings us to, actually, I'll describe this as a cross-section in concept. The tunnel, if you will, or pedestrian underpass will be the same no matter what the alternatives are. And what we're looking at is a cross-section here, and if I can show you in the top right, this is essentially a 10-foot wide by 10-foot clear opening for all alternatives, and this is a section looking north. And what you'll note is that on the east side, there's an embankment, whereas on the west side, we're at grade with the station, pretty much the same level. So, that's going to have some impacts on the construction, but it just gives you a general look at the concepts. Okay, alternative one, this is the only concept now that's north of the station, and this particular slide, and only the slide, and north is toward the bottom, if you will, north arrow depicted. So, what this is, is a crossing, and you'll see in the dashed line here, this would be, be where the underpass would be located, and this is the one closest to where the current at-grade cross, crossing is, north of the station. And essentially, in plan here, you're looking at a pair of switchback ramps, one on the east side, one on the west side, and these are similar to the switchback ramps that are at the current drop-off at the east end of the station, near McDonald's, you have what I refer to as the kiss-and-ride. Moving on, there will be three views here of what we'll call concept 2A. Okay, so this concept is south of the existing station, and a little bit difficult to see in the colors, but this is the east switchback ramp. This is a view looking northwest, if you will, but the McDonald's, if you will, is over here for orientation, the kiss-and-ride in that area. And probably the next slide, which is a western view, probably a little bit better, better depiction here of a switchback ramp, and for scale, just let you know, that's on the order of 175 feet in length each way, roughly, 150, 175. We're not in the final design yet, so all the numbers, all the cost details aren't quite there, but just, this is it, concept. Another thing I want to point out is you're seeing a lot of green here, grass and what have you, and the green is just vegetation. Yet, of course, will be enhanced with landscape, shrubs, bushes, flowers, what have you, but this is just sort of a general plan. And you'll see, this is the most basic of the plans on the south side. The next one is a little bit more of an enhancement. And lastly, this is the planned view of alternative 2A we're looking at and depicted here in the crossing is the location of the underpass. Okay, alternative 2B, which it turns out this is the preferred alternative. This, again, is the east side looking, I'm sorry, looking northwest in that direction. And essentially, this side, this view looks more or less the same on the east as alternative 2A did. The big difference in this alternative is what we'll refer to as the bowl, and that's this area here. It's a significant landscape feature which adds green and adds more of a destination to the west side of the platform, the west side of the station then did alternative 2, and it opens up the access on the west side in a way that none of the other alternatives would. And this is a, an added enhancement to the station. It's also a safer, wider-open improvement, if you will, in some ways. On the negative side, it does take more parking spaces, which through our studies, we determined really aren't needed at this point in time, nor even going forward. There seems to be an excess of parking at this particular station. And going forward, again, this is a planned view, again, of alternative 2B, and again, you can see the landscape bowl here on the west side and the typical switchback ramp on the east. So, you might be asking how we narrowed it down, and you won't be able to read all this detail, but just in concept, on the left, in the row here, we have what's numbered zero through five. The zero is the no-build alternative, leave things as they are. The others, 1, 2A, 2B, and so forth, are as we looked at. And alternative 3, A and B, was another concept that actually eliminated the switchback ramps, but to accommodate ADA, we put in a tower and hydraulic elevator in lieu of the switchbacks, has a smaller footprint on the site, yet it could be, by some judgment, maybe not quite as appealing to the eye, a little bit obtrusive with the structures. Some benefit might be that it would eliminate the need for snow removal and for pump stations, yet it's also creating, or would create, a problem with elevator maintenance and additional capital cost. So, that alternative basically flew out. And then the last alternative, 5, would have been a pedestrian overpass of a bridge, also somewhat objectionable. But, looking at the matrix itself, again, the alternatives are in the first column, and then across the top, we have six parameters, if you will, for selection, and I believe the council has a copy in front of you. You can kind of take a look at those, but it varies from cost to impacts on railroad safety and so forth. And in the color scheme, green would mean it's the better of the alternatives, red would be a fatal flaw or not-quite-so-good an impact with that particular alternative, et cetera. So, after we went through this matrix, we put some numbers to the process. So, in this slide, and I think you may have this as well, this is basically weighing each of the parameters against one another, and so what this does is it ranks whether or not cost, safety, impacts to the railroad aesthetics, or what have you, is the number 1 through 5 in terms of importance. And so we went through this process and got a weighting factor, which essentially goes 1 through 4. I think there's a tie there. Then, once we completed this part of the process, the next ranking was taking that weighted factor and then weighing each of the parameters against each of the alternatives. And the question that's asked here is, how does each of the alternatives weigh against the parameter in terms of benefit? It is either a low benefit, a medium benefit, or a high benefit, scoring a ranking of 0, 1, or 2. And when you multiply the benefit factor by the weight factor, you ultimately come up with a score, and that way we came up with the alternative 2B as the highest ranking for preferred alternative. That puts some numbers again to how we got to where we're at. So, lastly, again, a quick last look at the preferred alternative 2B with the bowl on the west side, and with that, we can hand any questions you may have.
I have a quick one. Here. Nor in the parameters here, and I only had one phone call on the train station issue. It was actually a conversation at Ravineum, saying, who designed this 600-foot ramp where we used to have eight steps? They were being physicians. But the, there's no parameter here for ease of use or passenger ease of use, that, that sort of thing. I mean, I'm looking at, there's safety, there's cost, there's environmental impact, there's aesthetic, but I, I'm not a train taker. I work north of here in Waukegan and, but I got to believe that, just from watching enough movies of people that take trains to work, that the average person who's busy would rather walk down 10 stairs, go through a tunnel, and walk up 10 stairs, and not to, I appreciate the aesthetics and the bowl, and I mean, I think it's going to be a great addition. I would just say, one of the parameters should be a perceived ease of use, and another one should be number of steps from this side to this side, and that should be a, there should be a minimum alternative as a legitimate factor, because this is the part that will get used every day by every user, and they'll assume, they'll presume safety, they'll presume that we've taken care of the rest, but that's the part that's going to hit the, hit the passengers.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for that question. Great question. So, in fact, we do have a parameter. It's not exactly called ease of use, but it's impact to passengers, and essentially those sorts of things that you were asking about have been weighed and were considered in that. If you look at the colored 1117 sheet, you'll see impacts to passengers, something like that.
This one here?
It's hard to see there.
This sheet?
Yeah.
The colored?
It's, yeah, if you read across the top, impacts to, to passengers is covered. And in fact, elaborating a bit...
I just didn't understand the title there, so...
Understood, understood. It's difficult. This is, this is a real tight summary, and, you know, it's tough to put too many words on one sheet. But, yeah, that, that parameter was considered, and in fact, in looking at each of the locations, including each of the six that are up on the board, in addition to others that we had evaluated earlier on, the intent was to minimize the distance that commuters would have to go from either the park-and-ride or the lot, and kind of minimize the steps to the tunnel itself, its location, to where that underpass would be located. In addition to that, in regard to the steps, it's difficult to...
I couldn't pick it out in the drawings. There were two.
Okay, let me, actually, let me think here. It's difficult to make it out in many of the graphics here, but for every solution that has the switchback ramp, there is also a shortcut at every strategic point that has stairs, and you'll see that perhaps if you look closely. It's tough to...
Couldn't see it on this one.
Yeah, you can, you can kind of see it. I think it was rendered in black initially. As a matter of fact, here, the, okay, so the, the underpass is right down the middle here, and you can see there's a direct stairway that goes down where 99% of the commuters will just walk straight down the stairs. You know, obviously, we have to have the ADA access to a certain grade per ADA standards.
Just to add to that, Alderman Moore. Thank you. When we met with the railroad, that was the number-one concern from the railroad agencies, Amtrak and Metra. That was their number-one concern was minimize the distance from the station to the steps. And as you know, 90% or maybe 95% of the commuters are going to use the west side, Telegraph. That's where the parking lot is. So, and I think that was an excellent point.
When I read your matrix, it was kiss-and-ride availability.
Right.
It never talked about...
Right.
Number of clicks, number of steps, kind of parameter, so thank you.
Right, and I think that was their major concern, that get the steps as close as possible.
So, at the risk of being redundant, 2B...
So, at the risk of being redundant, 2B, 2B will also have a scissor staircase on the west side of the bowl and on the east side, too?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, absolutely.
Remesh, I had a question about, there was some discussion about numbers of spots that would be lost, I think, if we had at the last meeting, under the 2B alternative. And, excuse me, while, the comment here tonight was, you know, it's not significant, we really don't use the spots. At the same time, just recently, tonight, we've talked about the idea that Hiawatha would stop here. I, I think we're, we're concerned about the number of spots long-term in the future and what we do as an alternative. And I, I'm a little concerned, while I think we all would agree that 2B is the most aesthetically pleasing, it certainly doesn't solve that issue, and it certainly doesn't present an alternative there. And I'm curious as to what the thought process is.
I think, Alderman, sure enough, I think that, that's a, you know, very good question. And if you recall, I would say a few months ago, the city council put a moratorium. The city owns two lots, as you recall. There's a lot right here, and then we also have a lot north of Fire Station 2. Currently, there is an overflow parking right now, exists as we speak. So there's overflow parking right now, and city also owns this lot. And I think, three months ago, council actually put a moratorium on those two lots for the same reason what you just said, is when, in 10 years' time, when we see that the ridership goes up, city has an alternative space for, for additional parking. And right now, the overflow parking lot on the Fire Station 2 is already paved. In addition, we have another empty land north of there, and, and the Goldberg property, which is, you know, at the northwest corner of Telegraph. And so those two properties are available to add more parking if needed.
I, I think that's, that's the point. I was just going to ask, Remesh, is the Goldberg Downey property would be available for this additional parking?
Right, and I think right now, I think the moratorium was passed a few months ago-
Yes.
With that intent. And I think as Metro would always require us on, on an annual basis to check your ridership, and I think that's one of the goals we're going to monitor, too, is how many people are using Amtrak, and how many are the daily commuters, and how many are residents, so that we can keep track of, of that process.
I, I think my only concern, Remesh, was that if, you know, we don't know, I don't think we know yet exactly how many spots we need if we do a Hiawatha stop. And, you know, if you look at the cost analysis here, and it shows that 3A or 2A rather is more costly than 2B, if we end up having to take the Goldberg Downey property and improve it and pave it, that cost may get upside down if we're really having to add quite a few more spots. So I guess I'm just, I want us to be diligent. I'm not saying it's the wrong answer, but I want us to make sure we're diligent when it comes to taking that into consideration.
I, I agree. I think, I think we are, you know, one of the concerns, actually, railroad agency, when they look at the bowl concept, they did say that, you know, you can, you can narrow those grades down, you know, and I think, as I said before in my introduction, you know, this is a different process we're using. Usually, by this time, I will have on the answers in terms of the grades and all, but we got the grant money, and we are doing the conceptual plans. And that was one of the items discussed at the railroad meeting, was to see if we can soften some of those grades, so that you can minimize, and then you'll minimize the spaces you lose. So I think, as we go into the final design, that will be emphasized, that if we can save spaces, and I completely agree that down the road is what we have to look at, 10 years, 15 years down the road.
Thank you.
Alderman, I think the, the staff is very sensitive to the question that you've raised. The unfortunate thing, at this point in time, we haven't gotten any direction from Amtrak as to exactly how many spaces they're looking at. That is a component of, once we get Canadian Pacific signed on, we can then begin to have those conversations, and I'm sure there will be an agreement between Amtrak, Metro, and the city that spells that, that out. One of the things that we are looking at, though, unlike if this was, for example, a stop of the Empire Builder, which is really the long-distance, is that this tend, this will tend to be more commuter parking. And so that's what they're going to be coming into this station, we think, from the north, southern Wisconsin, so forth, and then being transported from there to Conway or, or other business parks in the area. And so, right now, I think we don't know if we need 10 spaces or 50 spaces. But in addition to what currently exists at the Fire Station, there is still land north of the Fire Station that could be developed, as well as further parking. So I think we would want to explore that option first, because I think the fixed cost, the capital cost, would be significantly less than if we went onto the Goldberg Downey. Also, I think we have to recognize that if we do this on the Goldberg Downey, then it's not available for us to sell or do something else. So we have to factor that cost in as well.
And that's where I was going. I think the Goldberg Downey property has more value for us long-term than just putting parking there.
Right.
So I want to make sure we don't sacrifice that for, for short-term gain.
Absolutely.
Okay.
How many spots do we give up with 2B over 2A? And that kind of stuff should be on these, because, you know, like, again, the length, comparing the length, number of spots. We mentioned there's fewer, but it would help to quantify these questions.
Rough numbers, I think, 36 to 50 to compare to 10 to 12, something like that.
How many do we give up if we pick 2B over 2A?
2B, I think we give up, like, maybe 20.
I think it's on the order of 40.
Forty.
With 2B, in the order of 40.
We give up 25, or we give up 40?
We give up 40.
Forty.
Forty.
Yeah. There's some, if, if parking is a problem, there's an opportunity to reclaim and do some reconfiguring.
So the bowl takes 40 parking places.
The bowl plus, right.
The best 40, really, because they're adjacent to this.
Forty total, somewhere in that, with, again, the potential to reclaim, someone puts some others, because we can need to reconfigure a bit.
So they'd be farther away. They'd be worse spots for people going to the train.
Well, there's many spots further out, but in the area itself.
Oh, reconfigure, okay.
Depending, you know, we'd have to sacrifice landscape, and I don't know that that's the answer, or what anyone would want to do, but it's a function of how many spaces are needed. That aspect needs to be looked at more closely.
Was there an opportunity to do the 2B concept north of the train station at all?
The problem with the, the one, the Alternative 1, is that it impacts the traffic patterns. There's a two-lane drop-off in area that would be lost and reduced to one lane, and you lose parking there as well. There's 30 spaces lost to put Alternative 1 in place, and it would be on the order of the same, and it would be much more difficult to, you know, you have, there's, there's a bank there, and there's cab and taxi, pickup and drop-off and all that, and it was more cumbersome.
Because I thought we were kicking around the concept of trying to move the embarking and debarking, whatever it's called.
Pick-up and drop-off.
Further north, so that we could get those gates up on Everett Road, keep the gates up, you know, have the train stop a little bit further north of the station, so move the center of mass of that train station a little bit further north. I don't want to mention Conway Road, but-
Well, we actually have some information. I don't know if, Remesh, you want to mention what we've learned?
At, at the railroad agency meeting, we did bring that up, exactly, Alderman, I element regarding if we can move them north. The main concern was, right now, the train stops, and the gates are down on Everett Road. And we thought that if we can move the station north of it, can the gates open? And I think the Metro and Amtrak said that they're not going to let them open, because they need at least, I forgot the exact time, 28 seconds is, is what they need, the time for the gates to open and close. So even if you move north, that possibility is not going to happen, so that's why we, we did not pursue. We thought that we could do that, but they were looking at the safety angle, and, and it just did not work in terms of the thing. The other aspect on why we didn't look at the north, I mean, the north side will not work, is because the east side, it's very tight here with, with the new parking lot and all. If you put the bowl, remember, we have to provide these switchback ADA ramps, and that area will be encroaching into the, the parking lot of Fury Square.
I have a quick question. I, I noticed that, you know, today, and not that this is a great setup, obviously, it's clearly a bad setup that we have currently, but today, you, you have covered places to be on the, on the platform. And, except for the last, whatever, couple of minutes, and I'm, I'm not even, I haven't taken the train from here, I don't even know which side of the tracks the trains run on, because I'm a, you know, typically on this side of town, where the trains run on the wrong side of the track. So I'm a little, I get confused about these things in terms of which side you want to be on when. But the new program with the distances that have to be traveled, even if you do use the steps, is going to expose people to the elements a great deal more than they're currently exposed. Now, it won't, they won't be exposed to the train, which is a good thing, because obviously that's been a problem. But I'm wondering if, I mean, this is going to sound kind of silly, maybe, but, I mean, are you worried about people standing in the tunnel and then kind of bolting out when the train comes?
I think-
Because otherwise, they have all this tra, all this distance to traverse, if it's snowing, or it's raining, or what have you, they're going to, they're not really going to want to do that.
I think on east side, east train station, you know, you, you can, you can pick and drop off on Western Avenue or McKinley. Here, as, as we said, like, 95% is all, all on the west side.
It is, okay.
And we do, we did put in two shelters last year, two years ago. We did put in two shelters on the east side of the tracks, again, just to address that particular elements of, you know, how, how can you withstand the weather elements.
Trying to run in front of the train to get, you know.
But I think our hope is, like, once the under, the underpass is built, that, because usually the Metro trains are announced five minutes in advance. So the residents or the commuters can stay in the heated station, and then five minutes before, they get to move under the, under the pass and basically come on the other side. So I think we have one advantage-
How many people are in this station five minutes before the train shows up? I never was.
But I think, I think that our advantage is just being on the west.
It's just, I mean, it, it may be something that just can't be avoided, but it was, it was just an observation, as I look at these plans, that you're now in a situation where virtually all the passengers, if they're using the tunnel, are, you know, they're exposed to the elements a lot more than they are today.
That's correct.
And Alderman, one of the things, as Remesh indicated, we did, when we took out that one center pedestrian crossing a year ago, 18 months ago, we did add two shelters, knowing that if we were able to get the Amtrak stop and some of these other things happened, that we were likely going to come back and add either more shelters or a larger shelter. So I think that's, but until we have the design on where the switchback and the underpass is going to be, we're not in a position yet to design that. But that is clearly on the plate to be considered.
I just didn't, I just don't see any indication of that on these pictures.
No, it's a good point.
Who's picking the designs? Is it a-
You ultimately are.
Ultimately, but I mean, is it going to boards and commissions?
At this point, it wouldn't necessarily go to a board or commission, because it's not really a structure. Yep. If you want to send the, the landscaping portion of it to, to somebody, we can certainly do that, but it really isn't a structure, per se.
Did, did you say Amtrak's here tonight?
Metro's here.
Rick Mack from Metro, Public Commission's office.
Rick, do you want to come and make any comments on Metro's position on the underpass and the agreement?
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Rick Mack with Metro. Good to see you, Mayor and City Council. As far as your discussion, I'm not an engineer, but I have sat in a number of engineering meetings over the last 20 years with some really good engineers and who have dealt with pedestrian tunnels. First and foremost is, what you want to do is make sure the pedestrian tunnel is as open as you could possibly physically make it, because then people will feel comfortable and safe in going through it. If you make it too tight, and people don't feel comfortable, they're not going to use it, they'll avoid it, they're not going to feel comfortable. So that's number one. We've also looked at the designs, and we've supported the, the larger one, which takes up more parking spaces. And I think the important point there is, normally, the people on staff at Metro wouldn't support losing any parking, but we feel that is the best design. It keeps a more open tunnel, it's safe, it's safer. Also, the parking's going to shift when this tunnel goes in, you're going to, right now, you'll see that most of the parking, I think, is like, north. You're going to see all that pretty much shift down to where this new tunnel area is, and the open spaces, assuming parking's at the same level it is today, will be where it's full now. And then that'll fill up accordingly, you know, as it infills over time. So that would be my, my recommendation. Again, I know that, I was in the meeting, our staff looked at it, and we recommended some stairs, because most people will use the stairs, but we have to meet the ADA regulations, and, so you need to put those, those ramps in. And they do take up a lot of space, but it is necessary. And I would like to thank the City Council for being proactive in, in making these types of decisions, you're making this a safer station. It's always preferred to have grade separation over at-grade, and this is going to be an important improvement at this station. You also do a great job maintaining both your facilities and really putting safety first. It's, it's just been a real pleasure working with the city of Lake Forest. You've been extremely proactive. And if, if you don't mind, I'd like to say, too, over the last five years, I've had a lot of opportunity to work with the city staff, and I'd like to thank Bob Kylie and Remesh, and Karina Walters, I know is not here tonight, but they've set a real professional tone, they're knowledgeable, and they're extremely helpful and reasonable. And you can't ask for much more than that. And so it's, it's just a real pleasure to work with the city, so, so with that, I can try and answer any other questions you might have.
We, we thank you for all your, your efforts, and I guess you, you did make a statement that I certainly wanted to follow up on, too, is that, and reiterate that, you know, this, this all started with our, our look at safety, as you know. And we wanted to increase every opportunity we could to make it a safer platform for all pedestrians. And, and out of that, you know, obviously came the pedestrian tunnel for, for safety, for hazards, and for be able to cross safely on both sides. And then, obviously, as we sat down with that Safety Enhancement Committee, realized that we could also improve commerce in the area, and that's why we went back to, to Metro, and went back to all the railroads, and back, back to Amtrak. So, you know, the idea to have Amtrak stop here was first safety, because some of the pedestrian accidents we had was involved with Amtrak, that pedestrians didn't realize that the train was not going to stop at the station. So getting it to stop, number one, is, is our first safety issue, and then, number two, obviously, it opens up a whole corridor for commerce. So, again, we appreciate all the efforts that you've made, and all the help that you've given us, and that, I certainly learned a lot. I never realized how hard it was to get, you know, major railroads to change, to change a route from, you know, 30 seconds was such a, an impact across basically a huge regional area. But it's certainly doable, we're on our last step, and I think it's, you know, it's a great project for, not only, obviously, for achieving our first goal of safety, but opening up a whole opportunity, again, to increase commerce for, for Lake Forest and the whole region.
Absolutely.
I have a question or two for you. You've looked at our parking. What are your thoughts on what we call the Goldberg Downey parcel? It's a vacant parcel on the west side of the, of the road that cuts into the existing parking lot. Do you think we should hang on to that for future parking?
I do.
I'm curious about Rick, Rick's thoughts. He doesn't own-
Of course, of course. More ex, more access to Metro service is always a good thing.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we, you know, you need to provide that vehicular access, as well as you need the pedestrian access. They're both important, and I think in the future, you are, if you add an Amtrak service here, and if Metro service is ever expanded in the future, you're going to need more parking.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think it'd be short-sighted not to hang on to it to see what the parking demand levels stabilize at, or growth trend is. And now I've got another question for you, it's kind of a personal thing, because this 2B, I think, is a preferred way to go, in large part, too, because aesthetically, it's real desirable. So speaking about aesthetics, is there any way we could twist your arm into painting the Route 60 trestle?
We are hoping to get, we're working with city staff right now, and we're hoping to have a response to you shortly.
Because, you know, Route 60's one of the major gateways into, into Lake Forest, and we were blessed with the PGA awarding us that BMW next year, and we're going to do everything, aren't we, Don, to get the Parkway fixed up?
We are.
But the bridge is a, pretty much an eyesore.
Right, right. Thanks. I understand.
There's another gateway-
We're aware of that request, and it, I can't make that decision, but it's been, sent up the ladder at Metro, and we'll, we will get back to you shortly with a response.
Terrific.
There's another gateway on Sheridan, well, it's where it turns from Sheridan to Wesley Road. That overpass, which is also a Metro overpass, is not much better-looking than the one out on Route 60.
Eyes first.
I will tell you, our policy is not to paint the bridges, we make sure that they're structurally, we inspect them each year, sometimes twice a year, and make sure that they're structurally and they're functional and they're good, but we don't, typically, it's our policy not to paint the bridges.
I think both of the bridges in question have been painted in the past, or at least portions of them. The one over on the east side is about half painted, about half not painted.
Yeah, when I, when I was trying to get staff an estimate for painting the bridge from our Metro Engineering Department, the response I got, the estimate I got was actually the last bridge we painted was the Route 60 bridge. So, and I think that was well over twenty years ago.
Shows.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Bobby, the only thing I'd like to add is that I'd like to thank another individual who's not here tonight, is Norm Carlson. Obviously, he's been here before us a number of times, but Norm has really been so instrumental in making this project work, and his intimate knowledge of the whole railroad industry, and his contacts have been invaluable. I know he can't be here tonight, because I believe he's at a Union Pacific meeting, but.
Actually, he's down in Glenview, you might recall, where the bridge collapsed in Glenview. He's down there at that hearing.
But he's really been extremely valuable in this whole project for us, and I certainly want to thank him for his work.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have with respect to the resolution as well. If not, we'd ask for a recommendation to approve that, so we could forward that on to IDOT and Metro and the others, and get our final meeting with Canadian Pacific set up.
I like 2B.
Any motion for the resolution?
And also direction that you're comfortable with 2B, based on some of the other comments that we've heard here this evening. We recognize there's still more work to be done, but we just want to make sure 2B is indeed the preferred option, and we'll continue to refine that option.
Okay, 2B or not 2B?
That's right.
Just looking for a resolution for approval of, or recommendation of 2B?
Actually, a nod, a direction, would be appropriate for 2B, and then a formal approval of the resolution would also be warranted.
And I support 2B. Do the other council members support? I'll make a motion for that.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm going to oppose it, just because I'm just worried about the parking spots.
Very good. We have one oppose, and then a motion for the resolution for the Hyawatha stop.
And so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ramish, thank you.
I will now return to the regular scheduled agenda, and we asked Mike Thomas to be here this evening to brief the council on how our water plant is doing, and how our residents are doing in adhering to the even odd restrictions that are currently in place. Michael?
Thank you, good evening. I'm the mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, staff wanted to present an update with our water usage, and the good news is, things are much better. First and foremost, we want to thank all the residents and all the property owners in Lake Forest. We were able to get through the water restriction, watering ban, and catch up on our water plant, and we could not have done it without the cooperation of all the residents in town, all the property owners in town. So, we wanted to give you a very brief summary of where we are at. We are, in the end, going to be recommending that we continue with these odd-even restrictions, and again, no irrigation during the day. As a summary, May 1st through July 11th, it gives our total pumpage over the past eight years. If you take a look at the bottom right, number 463 million is our second highest. We actually, in the summer of 2005, had a little bit more water come out of the plant, but nonetheless, the system still was very stressed, and we were, for lack of a better term, pushing our limit on the morning of the 4th. The next slide really simply reviews for everyone how our water is filtered. It all obviously comes from Lake Michigan, we have two water intakes. All of it is filtered at our water plant and is put into our transmission main and our water main system. We have an elevated tank that holds one and a half million gallons, and then what we refer to as a booster station that holds four million gallons. We measure the capacity of those on elevations. So, when our tank is full in the evening, we typically like to see it around forty feet. The booster station, we like to see it sixteen feet, completely full. The morning of the 4th, our tank was approaching twenty-two feet, and we were below eight feet, we were at six feet in our booster station. The concern then becomes not having enough water for fire purposes, obviously recognizing Fourth of July with all the fireworks, so we were concerned with that, and we issued the reverse 911, asking residents and property owners to stop irrigating. We lifted that ban then, one week ago, Monday, and I'm happy to say, as I noted previously, that the residents have done a very good job working with the odd-even and the no irrigation during the day. As I noted in our last council meeting's presentation, the supply hurdles, lake temperature is our number-one hurdle with this water plant. It continues to produce superb water, always has, since we turned it on in April 2004. As I've said before, and I'll say it again, it is one of the best water plants in the country. The water that comes out of that water plant is absolutely excellent. Lake temperature, though, has an impact on the quantity. The colder the lake water, the less water we can get out of that plant. The warmer the lake water, the more water we can get out. So, the winds actually have a significant impact on our water temperature. Our intakes are twenty-eight feet below on lakebed, and when we get a west wind, it blows the surface water, the warm water over to Michigan, the lake turns over, we get cold water back at us. If you remember, a week ago, last Sunday, we had winds that came out of the northeast, the lake temperature within eighteen hours went up twenty degrees. Pumpage was great, we had no problems whatsoever, but that is the limitation of our water plant. So, that relates to fiber permeability, simply the ability to get water through elevated tank, as I mentioned, booster station, and equipment failures if those were to arise. But again, operating this water system, like any water system, you work not only your water plant, you work your booster station, your elevated tank, and we're obviously concerned about pressures throughout town as well. So, you truly manage the water system on an hourly basis. Future capital improvements, we will look and study, evaluate the idea of expanding our booster station capacity, again, four million gallons across from West Campus. Potentially, there's space and land there to potentially double that in size, and we will continue to order and replace older modules. We have 192 down at the plant, we'll continue to replace those as needed. The bottom line to all of this is that the even odd regulation is working, and as a result, we are proposing that we're going to remove the signs later this week or early next week. We have forty-eight A-frame signs located throughout town. Number two, we are going to put together a postcard this week and send it to all the property owners, all 7,000 water customers, thanking them for their efforts and letting them know that it's working to please continue working within those odd-even regulations and no irrigation during the day. But we have a sample that Susan Banks put together, but it's simply going to be a five-by-seven, five-by-seven postcard, sent to every resident household, not necessarily to bring closure to it, but we've had a lot of residents ask and call, say, gee, is it working? Well, yes, it is, and we want to, we want to follow up with all the residents on that. We, of course, will provide updates, and we'll post them in the city's dialogue on the website and through various press releases. The community signboards will remain in place as a reminder to residents. We also learned from this that we need to be a little more aggressive in the springtime and let residents know and remind them to please irrigate every other day and don't irrigate during the daytime hours. The plant has been working well, working within those stipulations. We also, going into the fall, when we begin reviewing our capital improvements for the following fiscal year, will have discussions on Deer Path Golf Course and the potential of installing a well, as well as Delmar Woods, the one and only outside water customer that the city has. They will be, I believe, within the next twelve months or sooner, coming off our system and hooking up with Highland Park. Both Deer Path Golf Course well, that idea, along with Delmar, will free up supply. We believe, obviously, with the hospital expansion, they will take up some of that, but there'll still be that delta that will be hopefully available for residents to use. We also are going to do a water rate study, recognizing that we're going to take an outside water customer off, as well as potentially Deer Path Golf Course. That's going to have an impact on water rates. So, we did a water rate study five years ago, we're going to go ahead and update and present that to you this fall. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Michael, I did have one question. Where do we stand with the installation of the new filters, and how, if any, will that impact our ability to pump additional water?
Pump more. We received the modules the morning of the 4th, and the challenge with the modules is that we have eight skids. To be able to replace the modules, you need to take a skid out of service. Well, you're taking one-eighth of your production out of service. The only time we can do that is when we're in low pumpage. When it starts to rain and when demand goes down, we'll replace the modules as quickly as possible. What we did over this five-day period, when we had the interconnects open with Lake Bluff, we did what we refer to as a citric acid wash on our modules, which is a very thorough cleaning, and as a result, we were able, when we came back up online, to get more water out of them. But giving us that rest, that pause, it takes six hours to do each skid, so it took us over two days to get through the entire system. But it was a, it was a good exercise to do, proved beneficial.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michael. Last item I have is that unless there's any objection from the City Council, that we would recommend canceling the August 6th City Council meeting. Right now, we only have one item that discussed, that was discussed earlier at the Finance Committee meeting, and that's a purchase of some vehicles for the city of Lake Forest. Other than that, we had no other agenda items scheduled, so we would suggest that your next meeting be Tuesday because of Labor Day, September 4th. Any objections?
I don't hear any objections, sir.
Okay.
We will plan accordingly then, and we will make sure the necessary notices go out. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members.
Mr. Mayor, I had just a brief remark. The city's been engaged in the ongoing development of a community-wide bicycle master plan study. City staff, Kathy Cerniak, Megan O'Neil, have been closely involved in doing that, gotten a lot of great input from residents, bikers and non-bikers. And the city is going to host a public drop-in event. It will be Monday, July 30th, from 4:30 to 7:00, at Gordon Community Center. So, I'd encourage anyone who wants to contribute some more feedback, some ideas, some suggestions, there's no formal presentation, nothing too structured, but please feel free to come by sometime during that period of time, if you'd like to add a little more input, find out the progress, and we really look forward and encourage your continued involvement in the overall plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council members? No, we'll move on to the next item there on the agenda, is the Finance Committee. Alderman Penderleone?
Yes, to start, I would like a motion to open a public hearing on the annual appropriation ordinance, which we had a first reading on last, at the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open for public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the city's fiscal year 2013 appropriations ordinance? Hey, there being none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Elizabeth Hollab, the city finance director, will give us a thirty to sixty-second reminder about the appropriation ordinance and why we do this and...
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As Alderman Penderleone already mentioned, the first reading of the fiscal year 13 annual appropriation ordinance was heard on July 2nd. This is a requested consideration of approval for the second and final reading of the appropriation ordinance. This is the legal mechanism to authorize the expenditures included in the fiscal year 13 budget previously approved by the City Council. It also includes rollovers, items that were appropriated in fiscal year 12 that will be completed in fiscal year 13. I'll be happy to address any other questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the City Council? Thank you.
I was going to move for approval of the, if you're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. Motion to approve the final reading of the ordinance on the rollovers?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that a roll call?
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Penderleone.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item in that is the approval of public safety information, technology, support, and project management services to be provided by Client First Consulting Group in the amount of 73,600. We did talk about this earlier at the Finance Committee as well. Are there any questions or comments for Elizabeth or anyone?
Question?
If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Penderleone.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. And our next item is a request for approval of the contract with American Eagle for the redesign of the city of Lake Forest website. We did speak of this in a presentation from Susan Banks and American Eagle at our Finance Committee earlier this evening as well. Any questions or comments? If not, that entertain a motion for approval as well. And move for approval to enter into a contract with American Eagle?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Penderleone.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Public Works Committee. Alderman Novitz. And thank you. I have two items on the agenda for Public Works, and the first would be a request to enter into a contract with a professional consulting firm for the downtown bike plan Phase One preliminary engineering, and this would be for a not-to-exceed amount of 75,000. We did have an opportunity to discuss this at the Public Works meeting that came before the council meeting. Dan Martin did present, and is Dan still, yeah, there he is. Possibly you might want to give just a little overview of the plan.
It's a little hard to see, but basically, yeah, the staff is looking for consideration to enter into a contract with professional consulting for Phase One preliminary engineering, as mentioned, and if you could tell, you can see down the middle of this, and each one of you put this packet together, because we had a meeting last Thursday and didn't have time, we just put it in as a placeholder, and we have it before you as a separate item tonight for your packet, so. But anyway, we're going to, the, tonight's, the Phase One plan is, connects Woodland Road and Illinois Road. And right now, as you can see down the middle of the plan here, right now, the Robert McGlory Bike Trail enters right into the commuter lots, and that is the bike trail as it goes through the downtown of Lake Forest. So, oh, sorry. Oh, apologize. So, this evening, the Phase One study, the plan proposes to, would design a bike trail from Woodland to Illinois in the west right-of-way of McKinley Road in the parkway. And it would look, here is Western Avenue, Westminister Avenue on the right, and Deer Path on the left, and you can see this conceptual plan has the bike path in the parkway along McKinley Road. So, in March of 2011, staff submitted two grant applications. One was to provide a bicycle parking structure in front of the depot, which is the brown building right here, and the second part of the, the second grant was to extend that engineering, or that bike path, north to Woodland and south to Illinois Road, the bridge. So, the not-to-exceed $75,000 for the Phase One engineering would incorporate doing the design phase in order to go to, to get grant funding for this project. for this project. So. Some of the design challenges that took place with the, with the grant that we did receive and notice on was for the bicycle parking structure. And that, that was right in here, and we realized that in order to incorporate that, we needed to be able to provide safer access for pedestrians. So you can tell, one of the things that was done is we took out some parking here in order to be able to lessen the grade change and be able to provide for the ADA-type ramp pedestrian access and gradually bring those ramps up to the parking structure. So the, the Design Phase One would help finish this conceptual plan that was done in order to incorporate a larger span of the scope to provide the path in front from Westminster to Deer Path. And it also enables us to get an opportunity to get a grant for the rest of the project between Westminster and Woodland Bridge, as well as Deer Path and Illinois Bridge. So the, the conceptual downtown bike trail plan will also be discussed on the bicycle master plan at that drop-in center session that was mentioned earlier on July 30th. So tonight, recommended action is authorize the Public Works Committee Chairman and the city manager to enter into a contract with a professional consulting firm for the downtown bike plan, Phase One preliminary engineering, for a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. And one of the reasons that we're trying to expedite this is because in order to go through the full process with the federal and state agencies for the grants, we need to get a design and fully implemented and, and approved through our, our own internal processes in order to, before they go before the federal and state review process, which is, takes quite a while, so.
Any other questions for Dan?
I do. I, I can't tell where the bike path is going, and I'm familiar with this, because I ride with a friend from Pembroke, and we go north through the parking lot all the way up to 176 and then west. But is it gonna be in the grass parkway that I see immediately west of McKinley?
Yes, the rest, what, the westerly right-of-way, the parkway between the curb line.
So totally taking us out of the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay.
On both, I'm sorry to interrupt, but on both ends, like?
Correct, all the way from the bridge on Woodland Road to Illinois Road.
Continuing south of Deer Path here.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't show on this drawing, continuing south of Deer Path. There doesn't seem to be a connection on the drawing we're looking at.
Right. Yeah, right. Sorry, we don't have a drawing that shows the whole thing, because the conceptual drawing that we provided earlier was done in order to be able to position the, the bicycle parking area, at least get a concept, so we could go before the federal and state agency in order to expand the scope, because we needed a better idea of how to place those bicycle parking structures. The Phase One, the continuation of the Phase One that's before you this evening would continue this and fill this concept out and make it more exact or more accurate, if you will, and it would also do the same thing for those other areas in the parkway.
So you won't have this extremely undesirable situation of people being dumped off the bike path and into an active parking lot?
That is correct.
So, but they won't be on the street either.
Correct.
Between the westerly curb of McKinley and the parking.
It would provide a...
Stop and cross the street.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so my next question is, this is Phase One preliminary, which implies there could be a Phase Two or Phase Three, or just a final engineering. What percentage of the total engineering is this Phase One? Because seventy-five thousand dollars from Woodland to Illinois sounds like a ton of money.
It's about ten percent of the, the preliminary cost estimate to do the work at about seven-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, just over seven-hundred-and-forty-five, forty-four. That's the preliminary estimate.
That's engineering and construction, is?
That's construction only. The, the preliminary design engineer is basically our ability or our skin in the game with, as far as the federal and state are concerned, in order, what you need to do in order to provide a better plan, a plan that gives you, you know, similar to what you had for the underpass, a telegraph, as well as then you can take a lot better pricing unit, unit pricing off of those types of designs in order to move forward. But the design, or the Phase Two, and then the construction management would be included in the grant application, is being paid for under that eighty-twenty match.
Oh, so in order to qualify for three-quarter of a million dollar grant, we've got to put in ten percent?
Eighty percent of a three-quarter million dollar grant.
Right.
Okay.
Six hundred thousand.
So we have to meet state and federal guidelines with this Phase One engineering in order to qualify for the grant?
Correct.
So ultimately, it's gonna cost us a lot less money if we spend the seventy-five thousand and get the grant, as opposed to just building our own bike path?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
I mean, this is a not-to-exceed number, right?
Yes, this is a negotia-
So what are we hoping it'll really be?
Well, there is some work that was done in this conceptual process with staff using, working with black engineering, so typically, these Phase Ones is anywhere between six and ten percent of the cost of the project.
Depends on if the engineer's watching this meeting. I was gonna say, six sounds, six sounds good.
Yeah, but it is, you, you know, we're gonna go through the process for professional services, and then when we select one, then we can negotiate with that one, so that gives us a lot of leeway to sharpen the pencil.
And again, just as a safety measure, to take the bikes out of the parking lot and also to align bike traffic to the intersections instead of crossing mid-block on Deer Path and Westminster, I think it's kind of important, not only for your safety, Mike, but the population as a whole. It's an accident waiting to be hap, waiting to happen, just with people backing in or pulling into parking spaces, exiting, the volume of traffic, bus traffic going through the parking lot area, and it'll definitely uncomplicate the traffic pattern in that parking lot, let alone kids biking to the high school. So it's kind of getting a bike plan going in a congested area for the future.
The bike trails to the north and south, they see a lot of, um...
Yeah, but this connector in the congested area downtown, this will take the traffic out of the congested areas, which is only a plus.
No texting while biking.
If you have a Bluetooth, well, we'll get into that.
You know, I would just say, as the council knows, the city has been very successful over the years in getting state and federal grants. Unfortunately, you have to invest money to be ready when the grants are available. We have been given indications, although no guarantees, that this kind of a project may be very eligible for some grant projects, or some grants that are gonna be awarded or opened up in later this year, and so that's part of the reason, plus not meeting in August, that we're bringing this forward. But with the assistance of the chairman of the Public Works Committee, we'll make sure that we vet the engineering firms and get that price down as low as we can. And keep in mind that whether we are successful this fall in obtaining grant money, or we have to reapply next spring or next fall, it isn't gonna be wasted dollars. We'll be able to have the, the plans in place that we can go after those dollars whenever they become available.
Are these federal funds or state funds? I can't believe the state of Illinois got that kind of money.
They're federal.
They're federal monies that are administered by the state of Illinois.
Federal highway administration, I'm trying to agree.
Any other questions for Dan? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panda Leon.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tack. Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, and our next item is for Dan as well, an award of a contract for thermoplastic lane marking.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr., members of the city council. Staff is seeking consideration for award of contract for the thermoplastic lane marking. The city of Lake Forest is a member of the Northwest Municipal Council, as you all know, and also that they belong to the suburban, we also belong to the suburban purchasing cooperative, which is, and one of the main annual joint purchasing initiatives for the SPC is to go to bid for thermoplastic lane marking for all its members. SPC's lane marking specifications meet Illinois Department of Transportation standards. Bids and, and selection of the lowest responsible and responsive bidder are approved by IDOT. The city is requesting bid pricing for approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand linear feet of thermoplastic pavement marking to include the four-inch, the six-inch wide lane lines, as well as some other various symbols and letters. The lane marking, as you all probably are well aware, was mostly for the asphalt surfaces. It is a, a plastic binder pellet that gets melted and puts out into all their lanes, whether white, dictating parking spaces, or yellow for center lines in the roads, stop bars. It has an average lifespan of about four years, and this is an annual thing that we do with the program. We go to bid and do, we break out quadrants of the city and, and basically do a little bit of lane marking per year with the thermoplastic. So the recommendation, recommended action is to award a contract for thermoplastic lane marking to Superior Road Striping Incorporated in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars. Striping will be completed by October 2012.
How's it hold up to snow plowing compared to conventional paint?
Much better. It does take a beating like anything, but conventional painting usually only lasts about a year, and you have to redo it, whereas this lasts about four years even with all that inclement weather, so the holdup is good.
Any other questions for Dan? If there's none, I'd like to move for an award of contract for the thermoplastic lane markings to Superior Road Striking Incorporated for ninety-eight thousand, seven-oh-four.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panda Leon.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tack. Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy eight, no nays, motion carries.
Dan, before you leave, no joking aside, who's responsible for the heating and cooling in this room? It's always been warm in here, and I don't know if it's a city council thing, but...
Pretty much looking at them. Got it noted, I'm not sure exactly why. I went ahead and adjusted, and, yeah. It's building maintenance, which falls under Public Works.
If it's ninety-eight degrees outside, if you get a twenty-degree drop, you're lucky. That would make it seventy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to do some adjustments and balancing, so.
Our next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone from the public this evening? Yes, sir. You want to come on up and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Kiley and members of council, and Mr. Kiley, members of the staff. Michael Roschowski, 648 Waveland Road. First of all, just on, on one aside, I had a water break in front of my house a few days ago, and unbelievable the response. I think within the break, I think within five minutes, the police had called the water department, the water department was there, shut it off, and they had another break, but they managed to bring out a second group that worked all night to get our water back in operation, so my compliments to that organization, the gentlemen that came out, they were a pleasure. In any case, the, the reason I'd like to speak tonight is with, with, I used to say I'm architect, builder, developer, now my wife hates it, but I just say I'm just about broke with this economy. But in any case, with the change in the procedures, items used to get approved by the board, and then we had a right to appeal to city council. Now everything comes to city council. Not quite sure where it fits in, but I am here to object to a item, and that is approval of a single-family residence at 131 Washington Road, which I believe is on your agenda. Many of you are familiar with my work from being on the various boards, but developed small houses around Lake Forest. 131 Washington, I bought in, I think, 2007, and designed a house, took that house to the building review board. I think you were on the Donald, were on the board then. In any case, got that approved, and unfortunately, I had a contract to build it, but as, as we all know, things went south, and I lost that property in 2010. A gentleman approached me at the end of 2011, bought the property, and was interested in using my design for that. We met, he decided not to use me, and then watching Channel 17 one night, I watched the building review board replay and saw this gentleman present a design which was way too uncomfortably like mine. In fact, it was the same design with a few minor changes. I won't bore you with a lot of detail tonight. I know the members that were on the building review boards, if I start putting elevations and plans up, they start shaking and having flashbacks, but I would like to ask just a couple things. One, I'd like to make one point, and I'd like to distribute this if I can. If I put the site plan, landscape plan up, it is exactly the same. In fact, it was my landscape plan and site plan that was presented by the new owner. Elevations are very, very much the same, but what I'd like to do is not bore you with a lot of the detail of that, but just to go to the staff's report of that May meeting, in which the staff recognizes that this is in effect, and I think they choose their words wisely, very similar design with a few enhancements. The second thing that was included in the package of the May 2012 meeting was the minutes of my 2007 meeting, which contained a lot of the detail of why the house was designed the way it was, massing, et cetera, positioning, and the staff included in the staff report of that meeting, minutes from my meeting to support the approval of the design. So in effect, I am looking for an objection, or I'd like to make an objection, to the approval of that. I think for, for two purposes, and I'm sure, as we get into legal matters, I know I was very, very careful, and I'm sure Vic will sort me out here pretty quick on that matter, but in any case, working with the boards for the last fifteen years in Lake Forest, the boards, the commissions, the staff, they make us work very, very hard, and we have a lot of respect for them. The designs we bring forward, the projects, only get better from the input of the staff and the boards, and we've come to have the utmost respect. And I would just like to think that we might have some of that reciprocal respect for the work of the design community. So with that, I just have one other, no, I'll just leave it at that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Any other comments from the public? If not, we'll move on to the items for the omnibus vote consideration. There are three items, I'll read all three, and you can take one or all as you so desire. The first being an award of a bid for the replacement and upgrade of the police department Tahoe's, including, included in the fiscal year 2013 capital equipment budget. The second being a consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, and the third being approval of the July 2nd, 2012 regular city council meeting minutes. Any questions or comments on any one of those items?
Move to approve omnibus agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panda Leon.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tack. Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. We have one, which is the consideration of an ordinance approving a zone change for lots 22, 23, and 24, the Wedgewood subdivision from OA Open Area to R4, Single Family Residence District. This is final approval. We did have the first reading at our last city council meeting. Any questions or comments? I know Kathy is, is here again this evening. If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, we grant final approval for the ordinance rezoning lots 22, 23, and 24 in the Wedgewood subdivision to R4, Single Family Residential.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Novitz.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panaleon.
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. And new business, we, we heard the item earlier about the Telegraph Road train station. Any other items, Bob, for new business? If not, any other additional items for council discussion this evening? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.